Councilman Good.
President.
Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
And the record will reflect that Mayor Mangerelli is excused.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and council. So today we're going to talk kind of a broad overview on cell tower law. Talk about a few things. We do have somebody here who could talk about sort of the engineering and how the technology works if you have questions on that a little bit as we get towards the end. We are running a little, starting a little late. I'm hoping we don't have to start our voting meeting a little late, but this, as you made comment, Mayor Protem, this should take about 50 minutes to an hour given depending on number of questions. So because there's kind of a lot of area to cover and it is, it is, should be trying to make it straightforward as possible and sort of non, you know, non lawyer speak. So let's go to the first slide. So here's what we're going to talk about. Mostly we're going to talk about, I gotta stand at the mic. Mostly we're going to talk about is the regulatory side of things, which is cell tower permitting and zoning. And that's what seems to be a significant issue on many most, if not all discussions about installing cell towers in the city. We're also going to talk a little bit about modifications to existing cell towers. There was a new, new decision rule that came down, not as dire, I think, just as a preview, not as dire as I think initially people had concerns over. And then we're going to talk a little bit about the proprietary side of things, which is negotiating cell tower leases, which the city does on city property. And then obviously questions, but I think it may be beneficial if you have questions as we're going through it to feel free to interrupt. And if we're going to get to it, I'll let you know and we'll, we'll move on. So, okay, first of all, the city does have some authority when it comes to cell towers. We haven't been completely preempted by federal law, but federal law, Telecommunications Act of 1966 was enacted to provide for, you know, pro-competitive deregulatory national policy designed to develop or accelerate the development of cell tower communications or mobile communications. And so this Telecommunications Act is our governing or is our guiding law that we then have within that some authority under our state and local zoning, but there are five specific restrictions that we have to follow when we talk about our zoning. So I'm gonna, can we move the little box there?
It's not gonna do.
Oh, it's, can I grab it? There we go. Okay. All right. So in a nutshell, when the city's making a decision about the placement of a cell tower from a regulatory standpoint, this is your decision-making matrix. So the question, the first question you ask is, does the proposed cell tower meet local zoning requirements? And if it does, the cell tower goes in. So for instance, some, not all cell towers under the city's land development code require a special use permit. Some, depending on the height, can go in as a matter of right. And as long as they, as long as the cell tower, if it's under that height limitation, it can go in without a special use permit. I think it's 35 feet in residential height. So if there's a 30-foot cell tower in residential and it meets all the other cities, the other city requirements, it goes in without any kind of public process. But most of our cell towers, because of our topography, are taller than that and so require, require going through the regulatory process. So then, then you get to the top block there. Does a proposed cell tower cover a significant gap in personal wireless service? We'll get into that a little bit, but that's a question that the applicant has to prove an affirmative answer to. Yes, we have a significant gap. This proposed location covers that gap in our service. And if I'm Verizon or AT&amp;T, it's, it's my company's service gap. If the answer to that is no, if they don't establish that, then we can deny the tower. If it's yes, you go to the next question. Is it the least intrusive means to, to cover this significant gap? What that means is the applicant has a couple of things it has to do. Can it, can it disguise the cell tower? Make it look like a pine tree or down in the valley, it looks like a big cactus? Or paint it a certain color so it blends into the environment? And again, that's dependent on the location. In a commercial or industrial zone, there's probably less need to disguise the cell tower than, than you would see in a residential zone. The other least intrusive means test is, has the applicant looked at other locations that, that would cover the significant gap? And show to the city on the special use permit application, why this location is the best technologically feasible location for the tower compared to the other sites that they looked at? And we can certainly ask, and we do, what other sites have you looked at? Why aren't they the, why aren't they the best technologically feasible? Sometimes the answer is, the owner of the property just doesn't want a cell tower on it. Okay? Go to the next property. I mean, the applicant can't force leasing of, of cell tower sites. So that's your decision-making matrix in a nutshell. And we'll, you'll see this again, just as a reminder, because this is the simple part of the analysis. Okay, so here are the limitations. The, I mentioned five limitations. Cannot discriminate, meaning you can't favor one provider over another provider. And that's, and that's not usually overt when it comes to discrimination with that. Usually, we usually see these cases is that T-Mobile got approval for a cell tower application and Verizon didn't. And Verizon's argument is, is ours is the same as T-Mobile. You denied us, you approved them. That's discrimination. They have to show that there was an actual, that they were similarly situated and for some reason, the municipality, in this case, the city favored one provider over the other. So that, that's an issue. Can't prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting personal wireless service. And that's a function, that's another limitation. That's a function of our land development code. So if we had a land development code, for instance, here that said, no cell towers in residential areas, I, I would argue that that would prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting personal wireless service. Primarily because in Prescott, we have a topography and the way we're situated with our commercial and industrial land and our residential land, that if we limited cell towers to strictly commercial or industrial land, we would prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting wireless service in, in many of our residential areas because the topography doesn't allow for service if we sink, if we limited cell towers to commercial industrial. There's a, there's a time clock that runs. It's usually 150 days that we have to go through the process and, and, and resolve the issue, either approve it or deny it within 150 days. And obviously, the applicant can always extend the time period if it wants to. But, so we're under kind of a, a pressure to, to go through the process rather fairly quickly. One of the big ones, I want to emphasize this, is that the radio frequency emission issue is a non-issue. So long as the cell towers comply with FCC regulations and the, and the applicant shows that it does, we, we accept that and that's not a basis for denial. And I know, I know, and, and just as a kind of qualifier, we're not talking today about any specific cell tower locations, whether it's city leasing or regulatory. And we want to, if you have questions, please avoid those specific, specific cell tower applications. Talk about it on sort of a more universal level. But again, we've seen communications often that, that people say, well, I'm going to get cancer from the cell tower or, or the cell tower. Cell towers have environmental problems. And again, FCC regulates that. And if the applicant shows that they, that it's consistent with FCC regs, we have no say in it. We can't say no to that cell tower based on the radio frequency emission issue. And last but not least, if we're going to deny a cell tower, we have to do it in writing and we have to lay out the reasons for it. And the reason for that is that the applicant can then go to, write in a federal court and sue the city based on a wrongful denial. So, and our, we're, so our denial has to be for good cause essentially, for, for one of the things that, that the applicant didn't, didn't meet or didn't qualify for. So here's what the applicant, yes?
So it seems in the past, we've talked about cell towers. We've been limited on our discussion about the radio frequency. So is that true?
Yeah. What we, what we basically tell you is, is there's no point to allowing comment, to be honest with you, on radio frequency emission because it's not a relevant factor in the decision-making. If, if this, if the applicant, basically when they file the application, shows in this application that we meet FCC requirements, that's, that's the end of the discussion. So, so that's why in the past, we, we've had applications where, like a planning commission, the chairman said, if people come up and want to talk about radio frequency emissions, the chairman just cuts them off and says, it's not something we can consider. So talk about the other issues. So here's what the applicant has to show or provide. Again, this is kind of your decision-making matrix. Does it close a significant gap in its own coverage in the least intrusive way possible? So that's your, your two boxes up there. Have they done a meaningful comparison of, of multiple sites? And the number of sites is, is case-specific. You know, it just depends on the proposed site, how many, how many comparable sites there are. Maybe there's only one other, maybe there's three other, five other. So that's, we look at that. Is this the best available site? Meaning technologically available being a key word. It has to be available to, to the applicant by way of a lease or a land purchase. And is the best, is it the most technologically feasible? So those, those are two items. And then, does it, does it comply with the land development code? The planning commission nor the city council will ever see an application, I don't think, if it doesn't meet that last standard because staff's going to vet that and say, you don't even meet our land development code. Your application's incomplete. You know, you, you fail here, you fail there, and they'll, and they'll kick it back. And so going back to that time clock issue, the time clock for a new application is, is when the application is deemed complete. So the applicant can't submit a half-completed applicant, the applicant can't submit a half-completed application and try and get the time clock running. It's complete when it, it's, the clock runs when the application is actually completed. Okay, so we talked about this, reasonable period of time, shot clock rule, 150 days, give or take. And then again, if we, if we deny a cell tower application, which we've done in the past, based on substantial evidence contained in a written record. So that's why we have these discussions. We, we, we take our minutes, we, we write up the denial based on the minutes and what was discussed at the meeting. And again, that's why we focus on or limit discussions about radio frequency emissions because if 90% of the discussions on radio frequency emissions, it's going to be hard to defend that denial in court because the implication's going to be the denial is based on radio frequency emissions, which is not, generally speaking, it's not an allowable basis to deny. Okay, so again, 150 days. We have 30 days to, once, once the application's in, we have 30 days to do administrative review for completeness. And then if it's not complete, we kick it back and tell the applicant, you're, you're missing these documents or your, your application's incomplete for these reasons. And the, the clock starts ticking once, once we deem the, the application complete. The 150 days is not hard, fast. We have some flexibility, obviously, in some upcoming, there is an upcoming application. It's been well over 150 days since the application's been complete, but because of COVID and some other things, the applicant has worked with the city to extend that timeout pretty considerably. Not sure, maybe at least 200, 250 days, give or take. And, and we've, and then the applicant can, you know, can request an extension or continuance of a hearing, for instance, which has happened. So the 150 days is, is, is a starting point for, from completeness to decision-making. But generally speaking, if we need to work with the applicant to extend that time, most of the applicants we've worked with have been, have been flexible to, to a degree. Okay, so again, we talked about this. We have facts, opinions and data to justify the denial. And when we talk about opinions, we're talking about expert opinions, we're talking about professional opinions. You know, opinions like, I don't like it, or I don't like cell towers, isn't really a good opinion to base your denial on. Opinions that say, well, this may affect my view, or, you know, this may diminish my property values are okay, but again, that's going to have, has to be taken all within context on those other decision-making matrix issues. And then again, the written denial has to be given to the applicant in a timely manner because that allows them to go into federal court and sue the city. They really have two options on a denial. Sue or revise the application and revise the site maybe, adjust the site and come back in through, through the process. We try and, we try and get there as a staff or through planning commission before it comes to council. If it looks like it's kind of going south, we try and get the applicant to see if they can make adjustments that's, that resolve or solve some of the concerns people have. But as we all know, you can't make everybody happy. So we do the best we can with, with what we can do when it comes to cell tower approvals, but we have, we do have limitations. So, so this is, this is important again, I'm, sorry?
Have we had a federal challenge in federal court on a decision from the city of Prescott?
City, not, not my tenure, we have not. I'm not sure the city of Prescott has ever had one. But again, I don't know how, how often we've denied. I know we, since I've been here, we've denied one time. But the applicant came back with a revised application, essentially the same property, just moved it a little bit, came back and they got approval. So that's the one out in Prescott Lakes. So on, on the Western Newspapers location. So that one was, I believe, denied. We denied it, they came back, rather than sue, they figured, they'll work with us. So that, you know, that, that doesn't automatically turn into a lawsuit. It can, again, the, the thing about that particular location was they had a lot more flexibility on that site, I think, than, than some sites allow for. Some sites, in order to fill that gap, you know, there's not a lot of room, so they got to put it where, where they got to put it. And they've looked at other sites and they've established their case. So this one, again, like I said before, we look at sort of two factors. Like I said, so we don't, we don't, we don't have restrictions in terms of our residential versus commercial versus industrial in terms of where cell towers can go. If it's in residential, there are a little bit more design standards that we would impose if it, if it affects residential than if it were commercial or industrial. But we, but again, unlike, you know, say down in the valley, a Goodyear or even a Prescott Valley for that matter, where it's relatively flat, you can, you can probably have, and I'll defer to the sort of technical side of things, but you could probably limit your locations a little bit greater in terms of residential versus commercial versus industrial where it's flat because, you know, cell, cell waves kind of travel and they don't get impeded by, by hills and mountains. If you think about, you know, Prescott, a lot of our resident, most of our residential, much of it is in the hills. And there's no commercial or industrial in those areas. And so if we were to, to limit in our land development code, our cell towers to non-residential, I think we would probably run into that problem. Tactically, I, I think in one or more instances, we would certainly run into that problem because we just can't, you can't limit it, given our topography. And again, so the, the other bullet point is, and this is important, that they have to show that there's a, there's a service gap for their, for that applicant's service, meaning a Verizon or an AT&amp;T or a T-Mobile or whatever. And that this application or this proposed site is the least intrusive way to cover the gap. Meaning they've, they've looked at other sites, they're doing, they're designing it in such a way where it's the, the minimum height or the maximum height they need or minimum height, you know, so they limit the height to that and they are able to, to, to have the least impact on an area. But that doesn't mean that there's no impact, it's just the least impact on, on the area. So it, so we look at that and you see that in your applications. Okay, so again, gap is case by case. The applicant's coverage gap is what's relevant. And it, the gap, if you ever got into a court fight, you know, or, and what the, what the applicant needs to show is what's the, what's the number of users that are affected by this gap? And it's, and it's not just current users, but potential users. So I used an example that if, if you talked about Deepwell earlier, you know, if, if Deepwell doesn't, isn't built out, but there's going to be, you know, 4,000 homes or 5,000 homes in, in this future, that could be a potential service gap that they need to, they want to fill and get ahead of the curve. And the gap is also, by the way, has gotten worse, given the COVID thing, because what happens is, is a lot of people work from home. And so there's this big demand on, on cell, on cell towers because people are pulling, you know, pulling down, I'm not using the right technical terms, but people are, are, you know, using cell service way more than, than if they went to work, went to an office, went to a place of business, that people work from. So we're seeing, I think, an increase in gaps or, or an expansion of gaps where they may not have occurred before, they may not have existed before. But if the trend is, is more people are going to commute, telecommute, more people are going to work from home, then the providers are going to see that and they may want to increase the number of cell towers that they have in areas, in residential areas, to, to make sure that those gaps don't, don't, don't get worse or don't occur. And so you may see that in terms of more towers or more co-locating, which generally co-locating means you're going to have higher towers because you're putting, you know, it's a trade-off. You're putting one more, more antenna up on a tower, so you may have to go higher up. Okay, least, we talked about least intrusive means. Have they looked at alternative designs, alternative technologies? There's, there's a thing called small, small cell tower, which is, which can be put on things like streetlights, you know, and that's an option in certain areas. Mostly those are commercial areas though that have streetlights. We don't really have streetlights in our residential area, tall, you know, highway streetlights in residential areas. But we can, we can ask, did you look at that? Do you have an alternative technology, alternative design? Again, it's a monopole versus a tree versus a cactus versus something else? And, and what are your alternative sites? Where, where else have you looked that would fill this gap? So we ask, we ask applicants to provide us with that information as part of their application. Again, we talked about discrimination. You know, and again, it, it really, you look at, are these two applica, two applications similar or not similar? If they're similar, then you have to treat them the same generally. If they're not similar, you can treat them differently based on those differences. Going to reemphasize this, that this is not an issue that comes into play. Does a cell tower comply with FCC regulation on radio frequency emission? If this, if the applicant in their documentation shows that it does, that's kind of the end of the discussion on that topic. This is just something, you know, we cannot, we as a city can bring in an expert, hire an expert to rebut what the applicant proposes to us. Obviously, there's a cost involved in that usually, but we can, we, we can hire if we wanted to, if we didn't like a location, we could hire an expert to come in and go, I, this location, you know, is a better location, here's why. And based on that, the city could deny an application because it gives us an evidentiary basis or a substantive basis to deny. We haven't done that in the past, but again, it, it has to be someone who's, who could be deemed an expert in, in a hearing. Okay, so going back to this, kind of recircling back to our regulatory decision-making, these are the questions that you ask and this is your decision-making matrix. So if you get a no, in other words, does it, does a cell tower need a special use permit? You get to ask basically two sets of questions. And if the answer is yes to, there's a significant gap and this proposal fills that gap in the least intrusive means possible, federal law says you have to approve it. And that's kind of the bottom line. So it's not a complicated decision-making process. The topic can get complicated and technical. And so that kind of bring, you know, brings you to that question of whether or not, you know, you hire an expert or not to review things, but generally speaking, we have not had that need. So moving on to modifications. So this is the law that talks about modifying existing cell towers. Okay, it's called the Spectrum Act of 2012. Okay, anyway. So this is important because what happened just recently in June is that the FCC amended or, or adopted a rule on this, on this act about co-locating and modifying existing towers. And this is June 9. So the rule affects primarily aesthetic standards and concealment, gives the city a 60-day review, and if we don't act on it in 60 days, it's deemed approved or granted. Now, the 60 days generally isn't going to be a problem because these reviews are done, because it's a modification of an existing tower, these reviews are done at a staff level. They don't go through necessarily the public process on these things. So what it, what, what some of the, the changes that are, that are significant is that stealth design means, you know, trees or cactus or whatever, so they don't look like a monopole. So they, the definition of concealment elements is now stealth design. It used to include painting and colors and things like that. So, so now the definition of concealment elements, if there's a modification, this is the only thing we can, we can look at, whether it changes the stealth design. So the eligible facilities request is to enhance an existing tower or base station to support an additional antenna, in other words, co-location. And our policy as a, as land development code in most cities' policy is we encourage co-location. We want antennas to be co-located with other antennas because it reduces the number of poles that are out there. And it's a trade-off. So we collate, for instance, not just on other cell towers, but we have co-location on top of the football field lights at the high school because there's enough height there where they could put a cell tower on top of that. So that's a co-location. And we encourage that. The downside, if you will, of that is that it makes the pole go taller, so it is a little bit more intrusive, but there's already an existing pole in place. So that's kind of the trade-off of, of co-location versus multiple, monopoles or multiple towers in, in the same area.
Question.
Yes.
So does that mean that we have to kind of consider a possible co-location when we approve an individual tower? Because potentially, that co-location capability would then apply to a, a new tower sometime down the road. So we have to kind of consider what might occur later on?
Well, the, well, you, you really can't because if we took, remember with the five limitations we have, we have to look at the application itself. So if we can get the, the stealth design, let's say it's a tree, you know, and, and sometimes when you co-locate on a tree, you got to make the tree, the stealth design tree go higher and you stick antennas in there. But the reason we really don't consider this is because we don't know if, if we know Verizon has a gap, we don't know if T-Mobile has a gap.
Right.
Or if AT&amp;T. So it's a lot, that'd be a lot of speculation to consider in that. So you got to, you got to consider the application of a new tower on its face without, without speculating that it may, may go taller than, if they're requesting 50 feet, it may go tall, it may go to 70 feet down the road on a co-location application. But you don't, unless you, unless that's, sometimes that's part of an application where you have a co-location tower as a, as a single proposal. Don't see that very often in my, my recollection, but unless it's in there, you have to look at the application on its face, unfortunately. So the, the big, the big change, I think, that in this, in this rule is not necessarily, well, there's two big changes. One is that the base station and the, the tower can be, can be changed somewhat significantly. The tower is the, the pole or the, or the stealth, the tree, and the base station is all the stuff on the ground. So what this, what the increase in height on, on this new rule says is it can go 10% higher for one additional antenna array, up to 20 feet. So if you have a 50-foot pole, you can go 10%, which is five feet, but you can actually go to, you can go 20 feet between the antennas. So a 50-foot pole under this new rule can go to a 70-foot pole administrat, administratively. So that's not a great thing, but again, it's the trade-off of, well, do I want, I have a 50-foot pole in a location that's been here, let's say, for X number of years, now it's going to go to 70. And if it's a stealth, you know, or a stealth tower, it may not be as intrusive. Or do I want a completely separate 50-foot pole? So there's that trade-off. So that's a change in the rule. And then this one's pretty significant too. It used to be that you could, you could get administrative approval for four cabinets. to be that you could, you could get administrative approval for four cabinets total. So if you have cabinets at a base, you could add up to four more cumulatively, so 1, 2, 3, 4, over a period of time. Now, there's no cumulative limitation, so ultimately, you could just keep adding, adding cabinets, those things on the ground, one after the other. Now, what we don't generally see here, which you may see out in, in, you know, more urban areas, is cell towers that have six or seven different co-located antenna. We don't really see that here as much. I'm not sure if it's because of the topography, the technology, or whatever. But, you know, generally speaking, we have some co-locations, but we don't see those big, giant 125-foot towers, you know, that you may see down, if you go down to Phoenix and industrial areas, and things like that. Okay, so another change to the rules is, they don't have to do an environmental assessment when the applicant and FCC have entered into a MOU, or MOA, sort of on a, on a global level. But then that would only apply, the environmental requirement only applied to historic properties anyway. So if the only time you'd have to do an environmental assessment, which again, is probably not going to affect us here much, is if it had an impact, if the proposed modification would have an impact on, on the environmental property.
Another question.
Yes.
If we approve a monopole design, and then a co-locator wants to come in, and we say, well, this is getting a little obtrusive and higher, we would like to see this camouflaged as a pine tree, or whatever, is that an undue burden on the second applicant?
It could be considered that, because they can, they can come in under this rule, and add 20 feet and another antenna on the monopole, without incurring pretty significant costs, of basically installing, would be a brand-new tower, a brand-new stealth tower in place of the, in place of the, of the monopole. So if the applicant were real cooperative, they could be, maybe, it could be negotiated. But in, under these new rules, it would, it's not something we would be able to push them on, or, or force it.
So would it be prudent of us to kind of consider camouflaging with the original pole?
I'm going to defer to somebody back there about, do we, what is our requirement about stealth poles? George, you want to come to a mic, actually?
Thank you. I'm the planning manager for the city, for those people who are watching on the internet right now. We don't have a requirement in our code for stealth, for the initial pole requirement. We encourage them, depending on the circumstances. We have a number of poles where the stealth application, under the old rules, was simply painting the pole in such a way that blended into the background. And we have several of those. In fact, I could probably name two that you wouldn't know are there, but you drive past them fairly regularly. The other is the tree design, the, some kind of stealth application of the tree. Most cell companies are now offering that upfront, if it's in any area that's in, or adjacent to a residential neighborhood. And they're doing that because they know the design of stealth tower itself is more compatible with the residential neighborhood nearby.
So George, up at the mall, is that a cell, those flag, those flagpoles?
The three flagpoles at the entrance to the mall are a cell site, yes, yes. And in fact, Taylor Hicks Elementary School has another
Right.
cell site in a flagpole.
It's a flagpole.
Yes.
So we would consider those stealth, essentially, because they have, they look like some other use.
Sure.
So, so I guess I sort of short, shortchanged this a little bit, by saying cactus and pine trees. But there's other ways to stealthify, if that's a word, a cell tower. So, you know, and of course, it, you know, we're looking at those as options, too. So I think the issue for us on this, this new amendment is not significant. The, the impact could be, in terms of a 55-foot to a 75-foot tower, is basically done in a 60-day approval process at a staff level, because of this new FCC rule. So could have some impact on, on height, but again, it's, that would be in lieu of a whole nother tower, in possibly the same area, which, you know, you're still going to have the base, you know, equipment, the cabinets, and you're still going to have the fencing, and you're going to have a separate tower. So 50 plus 20, or 55 plus 20, 75 feet, 55 and 55 is 110 feet, you know, I mean, so it's not, it's not, it's not all bad, when you, in fact, it's encouraged, when we, when we co-locate. You're leaning forward, sir, you have a question? You're just fascinated by this whole conversation.
Fascinating.
Okay, last but not least, negotiating cell towers. And this is just a reminder that we, we have a proprietary, sort of, commercial option to lease sites for cell towers. We have no obligation to do that. But the benefit of it is, is it generates some revenue for the city's general fund, because we charge a lease rate. And, and we, and our, what we charge generally is as high as any other city in the state. In fact, sometimes it's more than some cities. So our market price for cell tower sites is, is solid. We've done some comparisons, and again, don't want to get into specifics, but our, our market rate is, is a good rate, compared to other cities in the state. And the nice thing about doing cell tower leasing is, is generally speaking, if we can cover a gap with a cell tower lease, it's going to be on city property, which is pretty much going to be in a commercial, or non-residential zone, or maybe near residential. But we can also control what else goes on to that tower. So if we don't, we're not obligated to follow that modification rule, because it's a commercial agreement. So we have control over the cell tower. If we're, if we go in and put a, put a 50-foot tower in an area, like in a right-of-way, we can limit that to 50 feet. In other words, we aren't, we aren't required to, we aren't required to agree to co-location, because it's a commercial deal with one applicant. Doesn't mean we can't do it, but we're not obligated to. So generally, we don't go through the regulatory process for those cell tower leases, because they're on right-of-way, or other city property. We have them on top of the parking lot downtown, we have them in streets, mostly in our street rights, right-of-way. Sometimes we put them in parks. And so, it's a good way to, it's, it's a mutually beneficial process, because it, the applicant could kind of avoid the, the regulatory process, which is a lot, usually could be a longer process. The city can generate some revenue, and the city can kind of control what goes on with that cell tower, by making it more stealth, or, or making it more, less obtrusive, or, or for, for the area, like in a park, for instance, without, and be, and be a little bit more heavy-handed, I guess, if you will, because it's part of the negotiations. We can negotiate that as part of our commercial transaction. So, a cell tower leasing is a good thing for the city, if we can, if we can, if we have locations that the, that the providers want or need. These are just things we look at when we're negotiating, you know, we're maximizing our revenues versus connectivity. In other words, if we can, if we have to reduce our price, but we can kind of control what goes in, we may want to take, you know, we take that lesser price, versus having the applicant go into a, a site that may not be as, maybe more, maybe more intrusive to the neighborhood. We can, you know, we, we have to always be concerned about neighborhood concerns, as we've kind of seen in the past with one or more of our, our lease deals. We're not required to go through the regulatory approval process, but we could. And we always do case-by-case pricing, usually. But again, our prices are pretty consistent across the city, and, and they are at the high end, if you look at, across the state, where, where other cities charge for, for cell tower sites. I want to go into one other thing, before I go to questions. Without going into specific, specific site applications, there was a, something that I think all of you have received, a letter all of you have received, maybe more than once. It talks about a case that comes out of the DC Circuit. And it talks about a nationwide cease-and-desist order. And I want to just tell you right now, and tell the public right now, it's nonsense. There's no such national cease-and-desist order, doesn't exist. The case that was cited for that proposition is a case about net neutrality. Doesn't talk about cell tower sites, doesn't talk about regulating cell towers. It talks about broadband net neutrality. And I don't, and I'm not a technical guy, but it, the idea is, I think we all know, it's like, you, a cell, or a internet provider can provide certain sites faster than other sites, at its discretion. And that, and if there's net neutrality, it has to all be the same. Again, nothing to do with cell towers. And the case that was cited is a, it's called Mozilla, which is a search engine. So that, so what you got, and for the public out there, what you got is, has nothing to do with cell towers, no such thing as a cease-and-desist order from a court. If a court was going to, going to do something, they'd issue what's called an injunction. And, and so, applications are not deemed incomplete. The case has nothing to do with cell tower sites. And I know that you've received, that some of you, maybe all of you have received a letter more than once, that tried to convince you that, that there is some sort of national cease-and-desist order, doesn't exist. And, and, and had, just something about it, coming from common sense standpoint. Had there been a national injunction against cell tower installation, you'd all know about it. Wouldn't take a letter, because it would be front-page news across the country, and everybody would be talking about it. Because it would have such a significant impact on mobile, mobile phone use, and cellular use, especially now, again, given the COVID thing. So I just want to put that out there for you, that the case is nothing, the case that they, that they cited, this letter cites, has nothing to do with cell towers. And so, when, when and if you get individual applications, just rest assured that there is no, there's no federal court injunction against considering it, and going through the process. So with that, I don't, if you have any, we have a...
John with Niles Radio.
John with Niles Radio. And I was going to, we were going to suggest, he can come up for a couple of minutes and talk about two things. There was a concept called fall, that somebody brought, that people brought up, called fall zone of a cell tower. I want to talk about sort of what that means, and whether it's a real thing, or not a real thing. And then talk about how kind of cell waves, or radio waves, whatever, work in Prescott versus maybe a flat, Flatland. So I'm going to turn it over to John from Niles Radio, real quick, and then we can wrap this up.
Thank you. I'm John Lindsay with Niles Radio, out of Flagstaff. We do some of the work for your police department, and fire department, and the IT department. They have asked me to come up and answer any questions that you may have. And the two points he brings up, the fall zones for towers. Generally, for towers, there are three classes, guide towers. Guide towers tend to fall on any minor failure. You don't have any guide towers. We're not doing that. Freestanding towers are the large lattice-type structures. They're built for vertical real estate, a lot of capacity, a lot of equipment placed on a tower in a very small area. Those tend to be mountaintop towers. They're much more rigid and substantial than even the monopoles. However, they don't tend to fail, they don't fall from the base and topple over. And then the last being the monopoles. And of course, the monopole, monopine, or freestanding towers is basically a pipe with a substantial base, bolted at the base. Some of them are direct inserted into the ground. The application that they're, that you all are considering is a monopole. For the most part, monopoles don't fall. So a fall zone is a protected area around a tower, that anything that falls from the tower, or the tower itself falling over, would be protected. Generally, within a monopole application, we like to see your typical setbacks, and then about a 30-degree, at the most, slope from the top of the tower down to the bottom. It's not for the equipment that may fall off the tower, it's for icing and things that fall from the tower itself, so we don't have damage either to the shelters and buildings below, or that they're reinforced to withstand that, or to the neighbors, if you have a neighboring house. Most of the locations you have in Prescott are probably not subject to having icefalls. You see some photographs being circulated about windmill towers. Windmills have extremely high loads at the top, on a monopole structure. And there are some photographs that show monopoles that have tipped over at the foundation. That's not a failure of the tower, or the monopole, or the structure, that's a foul, failure of engineering, construction, or maintenance, and keeping up with your maintenance at a site. When a monopole tends to be damaged and collapsed, they collapse, they tend to collapse at the center point, and fall over. The top ends up right at the base of the tower. They don't collapse, and they don't fall over. And it does take a substantial amount of force to collapse a tower. All towers are engineered for, I think the code here they're using is the G rated code, 222G. It's a standard code, that all towers are built to withstand wind load, seismic, environmental concerns, icing on your tower. I guarantee anyone that builds a tower doesn't want it to fall over. It's quite an expense. And it's engineered with that in mind, so that we don't lose the towers. So I don't really think that a tower fall zone is much of a concern, once you exceed a basic zone around the tower and the structure itself, of about 20 to 30 degrees below the very top of the tower. Any questions on that?
Looks like we're good.
Okay, so we covered that one for you. And the other issue of, why do we need so many towers? You had said that towers, we don't tend to see the large structural towers, the 100, 120-foot, 200-foot towers, you don't see those in town. If you go up to I-17, drive up towards Flagstaff, the rare rest area, go over Mingus Mountain to the top on the way to Jerome, in fact, there's a monopine there that's 150 feet tall. Those towers are tall, because they cover a very wide area of low-density coverage, with the expectation that you go around a hill, you're going to lose coverage. You go through a dip, you're going to lose coverage, and we have holes in that coverage area. For most of that coverage, that's acceptable. You're using a, you're talking from your car, you pass through the zone, it's okay. We're not covering houses, you're not covering residential areas, you're covering as broad an area as possible. Same thing with the towers along the freeway. We're trying to allow people to text and drive, as bad as that sounds. You want to be able to use your phone through most of that area. And the coverage you tend to get is only 80 or 90%. That's not acceptable in a neighborhood application. So we, to increase the density of users and coverage, you have to have more towers. If you want to double the coverage of a tower, you actually have to quadruple the signal strength. You can't do that with your little cellphone. We can't increase the power. So the only solution for that is more cell sites. When we come into neighborhood areas, we're adding the complexity of homes with walls that you have to talk through, and higher bandwidth use. Both of those work against each other. Higher bandwidth needs a broader bandwidth signal, stronger signal, and a more steady signal. You want to walk from the kitchen to the bedroom in your home, and still have your signal consistent. And if we don't have a tower close by, then we have an issue with that. Prescott Valley side, I can put up a 80 or 100-foot tower, and cover an area about 10 miles in radius. Pretty much everything within that area is covered, and it's line of sight. In Prescott, if I put a tower on a hilltop, just about anywhere in Prescott, I can see the hilltops 10 miles away, I can see the sides of the hills, 5 to 10 miles away. But what I'm trying to talk to is the users who are on the hills that I'm on with the site. So the idea is that the tower height has to be high enough to talk down into the homes that are around that area. The radio propagation is, the frequency goes up, bandwidth goes up, becomes less and less capable of talking over the ridges. Line of sight being the primary concern, we need line of sight to communicate. And we have what's called a Fresnel zone, or a diffraction zone, when radio signal passes over sharp edge, ridges, houses, house lines, structures. It literally looks like a brand-new radiation point at a fraction of the original power. Plus, you pick up the original signal, and they all interfere with each other. The only way to combat that is to continue to reduce the power of each transmit site, put in more transmit sites responsible to cover a lesser, lesser area. As the density in an area increases, the need to fill an unserved area, or a gap in coverage, is not always a gap in coverage, my phone works, that's not a gap. It's, my neighbors are all trying to use the phone at the same time, and we have very poor coverage. Bandwidth goes down, webpages take a longer time to load, phone calls drop out, because the site is overloaded. So that gap in coverage is settled by doubling the number of sites.
John, is that considered a gap?
That's a gap. So the gap may be a technical thing, that you just don't have the coverage, because you've utilized everything that one site can cover. So we reduce the coverage that one site is responsible for, build another site halfway between two existing sites. Reduce the, height of that tower may be reduced. The power ends up being reduced, because you're covering a smaller area. But the main thing is, reduce the loading on an individual site, so we fill the gap in coverage. And then, both sites now are responsible for what one site was covering before, so we can meet the bandwidth. So it's not always that my phone doesn't work, and that's a gap. It's my phone doesn't work very well, where it used to. So gaps can be developed from areas that previously had coverage. And as you say, the well area, that area, if it grows out and continues to, to fill in, you're going to have to densify the radio sites, more towers in a given area, so that you get coverage in smaller and smaller cells. you're going to have to densify the radio sites, more towers in a given area so that you get coverage in smaller and smaller cells to fill those areas that are basically experiencing gaps.
So with all these meetings, Zoom meetings and everything that everybody's doing, is that using?
Lots, yes.
And then the distant learning?
Yep.
That's great.
Yes.
So Councilwoman, Lucy?
Thank you, John. I just, uh, would like to inquire about FAA approval. As you know, Prescott's home to one of the busiest airports in the state, possibly the nation. And we also have, being in the forest, we have, uh, low-flying slurry bombers who will be fighting our fires. And we also have, uh, medevac, uh, helicopters stationed at the hospital and, uh, that are low-flying, coming in and out. And on the applications for these cell towers, do you get FAA approval automatically or just let the hospitals know?
One of the very first, one of the very first steps in engineering a tower at a tower location is an FAA approval. That FAA approval takes into account the runway present, the length of it and the distance from that runway. And it uses a slope formula that's done online. And you must stay within a certain slope. Outside of that zone, then there are rules that govern, uh, tower height above ground and it's 200 feet. A tower of 199 feet doesn't have the requirements. At 200 feet, it may incur, uh, painting or lighting requirements. So a 200 foot tower may be required to be painted red and white. It may be required to have lighting on that tower. And then the FAA will make a determination of the type of lighting, the intensity of the lighting and the timing for the lighting, whether it's just nighttime only or at all times and what that lighting consists of. So that's a step that's done very early in the process. Once an FAA approval for that is completed, that is a process that has to be circulated to a local FAA air station. They determine if there's a hazard based on that initial review and then give you an FAA approval for the site. An engineer won't continue with a tower design until they've already met that basic approval. And that FAA approval applies even if it's a temporary crane use during construction, light poles, towers, they're all subject to that.
Okay, thank you. I just, we need to keep everyone safe.
Yes.
Uh, my other question is about, uh, radio frequency. When a tower first goes up, it's not unusual to have a certain amount of panels. And then, uh, after, once it's installed, more panels will be, more spaces leased and more panels added, which I assume would increase the radio frequency radiation, the heat, because it's non-ionizing radiation. Is that, is there a report generated? Are these things measured every year when there's a change? Who gets that information?
It's done internally. Tower providers, the tower owner has to certify. And it is a self-certification, but it's also, the information is available because you know what transmitters they have, what antennas they have, what power levels they're transmitting with. And they have to certify that they meet two primary concerns, depending on the frequency, uh, based on effective radiative power, how much signal in a given area, how much of that signal is, uh, transmitted towards the ground. Because an antenna doesn't transmit in every direction. It transmits towards the horizon with the greatest amount of signal. And it proportionally decreases as the signal comes in, the amount of effective radiative power so that the power field over that entire area is pretty much equal. It doesn't do you any good to have a lot of power close in and very little power far out. So those panels actually contain the signal to a specific area, say 30 degrees, 60 degrees, 90 degrees wide and a specific pattern. We don't want to transmit signal above the horizon, that's wasteful. And you don't want a lot of signals splattering close. Again, it's wasteful. You don't need it. The, uh, requirements for that are, are divided into an, a, uh, environmental exposure level for, um, public exposure, which is a lower level continuous exposure. So if you have a tower in a neighborhood, they have to certify with the FCC and the tower ownership, uh, the tower owners responsible for certifying that they stay below a certain emission level based on frequency, height, gain, power levels and time of operation, cell sites transmit continuously. And then there's an occupational level. It's a much higher level that's allowed. And that would be for the users that work on the towers, which are going to be on a tower for four or eight hours or in the buildings or the shelters or inside the fenced enclosure. If that level for occupational exposure exceeds, um, the maximum permissible exposure levels, there is signage that's required to be on the gates and fences around that site. In most cases, cell sites are below that level. They may be signed anyway, but they tend to be below the environment, um, the occupational exposure level. And they're all below, uh, over time, the, uh, public exposure level.
And then I have another question. Let's say, um, an applicant for a cell tower, uh, you know, they have to look at, uh, several different sites. And say there's two sites and, uh, one site is, uh, has a more expensive lease and it's more aesthetically pleasing. And then another site is like, say, right in someone's backyard. Can the municipality asked, ask that the applicant choose the more expensive site?
That would be something, I, I don't know legally what you would be allowed to, uh, impress upon an applicant.
Thank you.
I think when you apply for a tower, especially within a city, um, that it would be, uh, to everybody's benefit if you know of an available, acceptable alternative, that you ask that applicant, you know, did you look at this particular site? And, uh, in most cases, they'll tell you, yes, we did, and this is why this one works and this one doesn't. They do do a extensive RF study, uh, radio frequency study of what their coverage is going to look like. When we did the police department, for instance, we looked at the issues that they were having with coverage and provided a very extensive series of maps of what they have versus what they need to accomplish and what they can accomplish with the locations that they have. Cellular companies are doing the same thing. In the U.S., there are about 200, 250,000 radio sites throughout the country. They're on towers, water tanks, buildings, phone poles, light poles, uh, Verizon, 35,000 to 40,000 sites, AT&amp;T about the same, T-Mobile, probably a little bit less. They have a lot of sites. And it's not in their interest to build a site that's not going to return revenue and low maintenance. So I don't think they're going to have a problem when you tell them, we saw this site, did you look at it? And, uh, offer them alternatives. However, by the time they come to you, they've already gone through some pretty extensive engineering. And for the most part, they've probably settled that this is where they want to put a site to solve a specific need. They're not going to build sites that don't return revenue or solve a problem. It's not in their interest.
Any other questions from council? Any comments? John, very informative. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Welcome to Prescott.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So, um, I think that concludes our, our discussion, presentation. Unless there are any questions. Hopefully this was helpful as we go forward with specific applicants, applications, whether they're regulatory or leased. You know, you'll, you'll, you'll probably get this again in a, in a more abbreviated fashion. So it's just a sort of a reminder of, of, of what the rules are and what we have, what we are, what we're limited to in terms of our decision-making. So with that, Mayor Potem, unless there are any questions?
Councilwoman?
Thank you. Um, I have one question, and this is basically the whole crux of what I think the problem is. Because I've been, uh, involved with, uh, neighbors and cell towers for a long time. And just let me say I support, uh, cell towers. I have a cellphone. I think Verizon, I have my carriers Verizon, and I understand they're totally necessary for public safety, especially fire and police. So with that being said, um, people that move to Prescott and they buy a house and it's zoned residential aren't aware that on a residentially zoned lot, all you have to do is get a special use permit and you can put up a cell tower, a million gallon water tank and a mausoleum. And it doesn't matter if it's a residentially zoned lot, commercial, business, industrial. It's like a blanket easement. And that has caused a lot of angst through the years because people will be living next door to a residential lot. And then they're like, well, wait a minute. How can you put a cell tower or a water tank on a residentially zoned lot? So it seems to me that we could saw, save a lot of time and effort and anxiety with our wonderful citizens if we would say, I'm sorry, we're going to change the zoning so that all residential lots are just for residential use. And if you want to put up a cell tower, then you have to go to planning and zoning, get it changed to business or commercial industrial and then proceed. Because I have never seen a zoning that allows those kinds of uses on residential lots. And, and if we would just revisit that, I think that, uh, it would cause a lot less, uh, anxiety and uproar when homeowners find out that there's going to be a cell tower. That's what happened to Wickwood up there off of Copper Basin a couple of years ago. It was zoned residential. Uh, the Yavapai Hills Tower that's being looked at is on a residential lot. So people don't realize that when you buy a residential lot, you can put on a cell tower, a water tank and a mausoleum.
Well, I, I guess that would be a, a significant amendment to Land Development Code. Uh, I, I, as I mentioned earlier, I think that we would be effectively, um, probably violating one of the FCC, one of the FCA rules or regulations that would, that would essentially, um, make it, it would essentially deny service or deny the ability to fill service gaps. Uh, again, unlike a Prescott Valley or a Goodyear or somewhere down the valley where it's flat, as you just heard, uh, from John, you know, we're hilly. And so you have to have a lot more poles and a lot more areas. And, and I think if you, you, you would effectively be denying, um, cell tower, uh, or cell providers the ability to provide.
I, I would just like to look at the process because in your decision-making matrix, it says, does the proposed cell tower meet local jurisdiction zoning requirements? So if we change those zoning requirements to, it doesn't, you can't put a cell tower on residential unless you get it rezoned. And I think that would solve a lot of problems.
John, I'd like to say, we've got another meeting that we have to.
Thank you.
Get going pretty soon. And I think basically the purpose of this meeting was to educate, educate us about the FCA law. And appreciate you've done a great job.
Thank you.
And, uh, so is everybody okay? We take a five minute break and we'll come back and start the voting meeting?
All right, very good. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Ms. Palladini.